Welcome, folks. We'll look to resume the regular meeting of council for October the 13th at 7:05. Welcome everyone to our meeting, and I sure hope that everyone had their fill of turkey over the weekend. Looking for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Public participation? This is your opportunity, folks, of anyone in the audience that would like to come before council and address us. The microphone is there, and I can't see the red light, but I'm sure, Marcia, you've got it on. So this is your turn. Kathleen?
Catherine Robertson, 395 Farview Road. Good evening. I would like to address first the lack of professionalism demonstrated by some of the members of council. First, at the council meeting of September 14th, Mayor Hamilton had her head on the table like a kindergartner at naptime. I understand your job can be stressful, but perhaps, and perhaps, tiring. However, if you were that tired, you should have been in the back with your eyes closed and asked someone to come and get you two minutes before the meeting. Not sit out here for 10 minutes with your head on the table. At the public hearing, and I have a picture of that, at the public hearing, Counselor Martin sat with his hands behind his head as if the meeting was held in his living room, like this, lounging in the chair. Total disrespect for the people whose lives were affected by the decisions that you make. Counselor Logan called us groupies at a planning and, uh, planning committee meeting. That is, pardon me?
Point of order. I'm not going to listen to just her insulting council members.
I am stating facts, Mr. Martin. These are facts.
I can call a point of order unless...
What does that mean, sir?
Maybe you should find out.
These are the facts. The people of Colwood deserve to be treated better. If this is how you behave at a municipal meeting, I'd hate to see you out in public.
Any other members of the public? Third and final time, folks. Any further members of the public? Seeing none, we shall move on. Next item before us is mayor's message. There are a few bits here. First of the order is, I'd like to announce the appointment of Dwayne McNeil to our, pardon me, Economic Development Committee. So Dwayne, that appointment is in effect immediately. So our next meeting is October the 15th, and we welcome you to the committee. From that, there's also a memo that came out from the West Shore Chamber of Commerce that the West Shore Community Awards will be held on October the 29th this year up at the Weston Bear Mountain. The price of the tickets is $84. Members of council are also invited to come along and do that. The chamber has the tickets available in their office. So anyone that wants that can either go through me or just call up to Julie herself. Another item is that it has been declared through the provincial government, October is Foster Family Month, from Honorable Stephanie Kadu. So we have that recognition on our website as well. There's many families that participate as foster families in our community and the good work that they do. The other one is October 30th. The Legion will be here onsite to do the raising of the flag in recognition of Remembrance Day, and Poppy Campaign begins the 30th of October. So members of council and staff, anyone that wants to come in and be part of that, that's October the 30th at 1 o'clock in the afternoon. Anyone else from council with, uh, anything coming up their way? Seeing none, we'll move along. Adoption of the minutes for the regular meeting of council, September 28th. I'll move adoption. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Also for the public hearing minutes of September 30th?
I'll move adoption of the public hearing minutes.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Receive, please, report of public hearing, October, or pardon me, September 30th, report of public hearing.
Move receipt, Your Worship.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Correspondence requiring council direction. There is a discussion item Counselor Nault has brought forward. Counselor Nault?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, for those of you who are not familiar, Colwood has a sign bylaw that is currently in force. The sign bylaw allows one notice board or one sandwich board sign per business. Further, it states that the sign, sandwich board, shall be placed entirely within three meters of the business building wall and shall not be located within six meters of a street. On the weekend, I noticed the explosion of the number of sandwich board signs in Colwood. To wit, on a short drive from my house down to Coast Collective and back, there was one at Ocean and Belmont, one at Ocean and Lagoon, four at Lagoon and Heatherbill, another seven on Heatherbill, and eight more along Suk Road. These represented Coast Collective, all of which were on city property, and all of which were within six meters of the road. Ocean Grove, same thing. Pacific Landing, same thing. Pacific View, same thing. ATM signs that were on a store lot, so there were two of them, that makes that, one of them illegal. Four Mile Liquor, again, on a store lot, that's legal. Electric smoking devices, and one for Spirit Bay, which I don't believe is even in the city of Colwood. When I asked bylaw about why the bylaw sign were not being removed, or the bylaw was not being enforced, I was informed by the bylaw officer, Mr. Atkinson, that the chief, the director of planning had instructed him not to remove, or not to enforce. That subsequently got changed by the chief administrative officer, who told me that this had been a council motion. When I asked for that motion to be included in the minutes, nobody was able to find it. This was never a council decision. The story then changed to it might have been the previous chief administrative officer's orders. Nonetheless, none of those, other than council, has the authority to tell the bylaw department not to enforce the bylaw. Personally, I don't mind one or two sandwich signs, but when I see them seven down Heatherbill Road advertising three different businesses on that very road, it's getting a little bit ridiculous, and I think it's only going to get worse. So I would like clear council direction to start enforcing our bylaw as it stands, or enforce it as it stands until such time as we modify it. So I will be making that motion.
Did you, you want that as the motion? Because then we need, I'll look for a second or...
I would like to present that as a motion, and then we can discuss it, should it get a second or...
Thank you. Second or?
I'll second it for discussion.
Carry on discussion. Anything further, Counselor Nault, or I'll open it? Counselor Day?
So I would recommend, I think we should be enforcing the bylaws that we have on the books, and if there's a reason to change them, let's get staff to bring back a report. I understand there's a lot of pressures on businesses to try to make themselves viable and to ensure that they are seen. And if we're going to change it for one, we need to change it for all. So if we want to look at that bylaw and decide that there's a different way to do it, let's do that. But let's not have one rule on the books and then just ignore it.
Nault?
Yes, the bylaw also allows businesses to apply to put up signs on city property and pay a fee for it. I don't have a problem with that. The problem with the sandwich boards is they're entirely unregulated. They're placed haphazard on city boulevards, and in the case of Heatherbill, I had to pull off the road to let somebody pass because the sandwich board sign was blocking traffic. That is an unsafe situation. If it was a regulated sign, we would have had some say in it. So I would really like to see this enforced until such time as council has a better bylaw on the books.
I'm looking to staff. Director Burhill, where are we on the sign bylaw?
Your Worship, if I remember correctly, the sign bylaw in council strategic plan was to be completed in 2016, I believe.
So it's still under review and rehash and whatever?
Correct.
Is there, I mean, this council is a new one, and perhaps Counselor Nault hasn't had a chance to input on that through committee process? Is that where we should be and need to be going to make sure that we're complete? Because I hear Counselor Day as well, that, you know, we have bylaws. If they need to be changing, we've got to have a process to be going through that.
Yeah, in terms of where we're at when we, where we left the sign bylaw rewrite, was the next step would be to undertake public consultation. And for this issue, we would recommend that there be significant consultation with the business owners that are putting the signs out. I might just clarify that the, I believe the direction that was given to the bylaw officer was from years past. I think that the last time it came up on the staff level was certainly before I can recall as director here. But it is, I can say, a very tricky issue because of the strong feelings that business owners have about getting their message out.
Your Worship, can I add some comments on this? Because we have spent some time at the staff level in the past week, sort of researching, you know, what is our current practice? What has our past practice been? Were there any previous council motions with respect to enforcement of sandwich board signs? So I don't necessarily think that this is a bad discussion to have in regards to greater clarity for staff in terms of moving forward with respect to the enforcement, particularly of the sandwich board regulations. I think it's safe to say that, as Counselor Nault has indicated, you know, we couldn't find any specific council motion related to any particular signs or pertaining to this particular matter. Counselor Nault has indicated the parameters of the bylaw. I think it's safe to say that, you know, my take of the situation, it's not unlike a lot of municipalities where they enforce their bylaws on a complaint basis. And generally speaking, when it comes to the sandwich board signs, we're generally enforcing on a complaint basis. And if we go out there and we see that the sign is interfering with sightlines, sidewalks, footpaths, traffic, it interferes with traffic, we'll certainly take action. Having said that, we have recently initiated enforcement on Pacific Landing, Ocean Grove, and Pacific View sandwich board signs that were clearly on city property. We've asked them to remove those within, I think it's tomorrow. But generally speaking, and this is where I think staff would benefit from some clearer direction from council, how far do you want us to go with respect to enforcement of our bylaw, specifically with respect to sandwich boards? Obviously, the jurisprudence is that a municipality can elect not to enforce the bylaw, or any bylaws, but sometimes clearer direction from council would be required. But I think it's safe to say that with respect to sandwich board signs, by and large, we're enforcing on a complaint basis, and we'll take action if clearly they're sort of interfering with those parameters I talked about. Thank you.
Counselor Logan?
Thank you, Worship. I just want to make sure that we don't get into a situation where we're swatting the fly with a sledgehammer, you know, and really, you know, dedicating a whole whack of staff time to an issue that, you know, could be spent elsewhere, you know, and I don't disagree if there's an issue with sightlines and the issues that Counselor Nault brought up, absolutely, and it looks like the city is dealing with that. But I personally haven't seen a proliferation, and if it's, I think there has to be some judgment exercised, you know. So I don't want us to go out and whack every hand of every business that has a sandwich board sign, because I just don't think that sends the right message. So I think municipal enforcement needs to be able to exercise some judgment, and if there's a serious complaint, not a frivolous complaint, but a serious complaint, for whatever reason, then the city should act on it like it has in the past. But I just don't want us to go and whack people for, you know, for trying to sell their business, you know, or the wares of their business. I don't, I just think it sends the wrong message. So I don't want us to be over heavy-handed and maybe have that discussion with some of the business owners before we start taking that action. Thanks.
Any other members of council? Counselor Day?
Sorry, just one last thing, which is, when I've observed a lot of sandwich board signs, there is quite a few places where they're continuously used, sandwich, or sometimes I'm surprised that they remain because they are never moved or brought in or anything. So they are, in fact, being used as permanent signs, and maybe that's kind of being used as a workaround to not go to the expense of getting a permit and putting up a proper sign. So I think there is a discussion that needs to take place in terms of, you know, when is a sandwich board appropriate, which there are appropriate uses for sandwich boards. If it's, you know, a special event, you want to draw somebody's attention to something that isn't normal, a sandwich board makes an awful lot of sense. But if it's, you know, always going to be there, then maybe that should be a different kind of sign and regulate it in a different kind of way. So I just think we need to think about that as well.
Anyone else? Called, you're good? Called question, all those in favor? Opposed? One opposed? Motion carries? Thank you. Looking for direction on a letter from the City of Victoria in regards to support, a letter of support for the redevelopment of the Belleville Terminal.
I thought this was an interesting letter, and quite often when we receive letters like this for regional improvements, whether it's a bridge or a terminal, as is in this case, the Belleville Terminal, you know, I really have to ask myself whether or not, you know, what's the bang for the buck? You know, what are the potential costs for Colwood, and what are the potential benefits? And I actually took the ferry from the Belleville Terminal down to go to Portland for a Dragon Boat Festival, and I was astounded in coming back what a view there is of Royal Bay as you come in on the ferry. It's the one place where you really, you know, Colwood is the first thing really that you see coming into Victoria, and then you kind of steer into Victoria Harbor. And there's a number of benefits to bringing tourism to a region. It's certainly something that we are targeting with our economic development initiatives. And so I think it is important to remember that we have a place in a region, and we would like to invite people into our region in a welcoming way. I'd like to see whatever is done with economic development include a greater connectivity to the many amenities that are on the West Shore that sometimes get ignored in the downtown core because of proximity, travel time, et cetera, et cetera, awareness of how to get here. But I think that this is only asking for a letter of support for what is a regional gateway, and I think maybe it's a good idea to send a letter of support. Hopefully, it doesn't come with a big price tag later on, but I'm willing to go with the letter of support.
So far, there's no money attached to it, it's just a letter. So I would move that... Do I need a recommendation?
I would move that we send a letter of support.
Second or, please? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Planning and Land Use Memorandum of Planning Regarding Boarding School Resoning Text Amendment for 1945 Suk Road. Is that going through planning or yourself?
Thank you, Worship. The memorandum before you has been prepared by staff in response to council's direction to provide information on the financial implications of granting the request made by the Duwait School, Canada Holdings Incorporated, to add boarding school to the list of permitted uses in the community commercial or C2 zone on the properties located at 1939 and 1945 Suk Road. The staff expect that legislation currently under consideration by the provincial government will make the subject property completely tax exempt from municipal taxes. We have, with input from the municipal solicitor, identified a legal means to obtain monies in lieu of property tax, and tonight are looking for a direction from council to further discussions with the applicant about negotiating that device. We've found some examples from other municipalities where Section 219 covenants were used to provide a legal framework for monies in lieu of property taxes, and as such are recommending that council direct staff to work with the applicant to devise the terms of a Section 219 covenant addressing the financial contribution to the city with respect to the use of municipal services to be approved by council prior to fourth reading. And I just want to say thanks to administration department. They've thoughtfully asked me to add to this recommendation that the address be included in the, any recommendation, or any resolution coming from council. Thank you.
Discussion? Discussion? Counselor Day?
I think it's an important step to look at providing for future municipal services for the area, so I'm very supportive and really appreciative of staff doing the extra work to identify ways to do this.
Counselor Nault?
Yes, I thank you, Madam Mayor. I fully support this. I think the school would be a wonderful use of that site. It's ideally located beside Royal Roads, but to have a private for-profit school running a business within our city and paying no property taxes does not seem to be fair to me. If it was a public school, it would be a different story. But I fully support staff building a Section 219 covenant and look forward to seeing what the terms of that are.
Anyone else? So the tax exemption comes from the province. They're changing their parameters in that regard, and I, you know, have heard the developer say on a number of occasions, you know, that they're willing to come to some sort of agreement on something to compensate. So I think this is a win-win out of things, and I look forward to what we can get back from the covenant. So, anyone else? Called question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? 6.2 Finance and Admin Memo from the Director of Administration. Application for Amendment to Liquor Primary at the Wanda Fucco Recreation Center. This was referred from our regular meeting of council September 14th. We have two members of our council who sit on the board of the West Shore Parks and Rec, and for those reasons will step aside as a potential conflict of interest.
Your Worship, this is coming back to council. You'll recall that at a previous council meeting, you did receive an extensive report and a bit of a presentation from West Shore Parks and Rec outlining the nature and extent of their proposed amendment to their liquor primary and their food primary licenses. And there's a very structured process that the province requires us to go through. Our recommendation, which was adopted by council, is that basically we take a bit of a timeout, advertise in two consecutive issues of the newspaper, the details of the applications, and invite any comments from the public, either written or in person this evening. We indicated that this matter would be reconsidered by council this evening. So the item is back in front of you. I understand that there are no written submissions from the public that have been received commenting on the applications. Your Worship, we should call for any verbal representations, any members of the public who may be here this evening, and then I'll provide a recommendation to you in regards to the next step.
Certainly, and I will do that at this time. So if there's any members of the public speaking specifically to this item on our agenda, be happy to have you come to the microphone and let us know what that might be. And I would say we're clear for the recommendation.
Thank you, Your Worship. So if you refer to the last two pages under the options section of the report that's been prepared by the Director of Administration, she offers the following example is offered for consideration in forming a resolution. And this is, this is the requested format to be provided to the liquor control and licensing branch. Of course, you have the opportunity, advise that the city will not be providing any comments on the application. However, given the fact that you did advertise and give the public the opportunity, we're suggesting that you consider the following example that Ms. Van Buskirk has set out, that the liquor control and licensing branch be advised that, B, that the views of the residents on the potential for noise and/or the impact on the community if the application is approved are as follows, and council's comments with respecting the views of the residents. It's a bit of a moot point, I guess, at this point in time, that the City of Colwood recommends approval or doesn't recommend approval, and authorize the corporate officer to sign the appropriate section of the application.
I thought, I saw your finger up, that's all.
You did, but I, we were tied.
Okay. I would recommend that the city, that we advise the liquor control and licensing branch that we undertook the public consultation as written, and that we received no comments from the public, and that the city recommends approval, and that the corporate officer be authorized to sign Part IV, et cetera.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I'm rather surprised at the complete lack of any input into this issue. Some of the numbers for those licenses were rather huge, but given that it's not this council's duty to approve or deny this application, we only pass on our citizens' concerns, and there seem to be none, so I will be supporting the motion.
Any further comments? Called question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Could somebody step out and grab our two missing members, please, while I reset my Item 6.2.2, Report Acting Deputy Director of Finance Regarding the 2016 Permissive Tax Exemption Application for 345 Whale Road. Finance?
Thank you. We have before you this evening, council, as is normally presented at this time of year, the permissive tax applications. Council has in previous years awarded 10-year permissive tax exemptions, and that listing is in your package as bylaw number 1359. We do have one property which has been awarded annual permissive tax exemptions, and that is the Children's Health Foundation located at 345 Whale Road. We're presenting it for your consideration this evening, first in a report, and then if council is in agreement in the later part of the meeting this evening, it will be coming forward for the bylaw to be given three readings. So you have seen this property before. We've had a look at it. Staff's recommendation is that it does meet the requirements of... Staff's recommendation is that it does meet the requirements of the community charter to qualify for a permissive tax exemption. I did have a look in the financial statements, and I see that property taxes do make up a significant portion of their expenditures. Even with the exemption, they're paying about $125,000 per year, which is a very large chunk of their actual expenditures, just to give you some perspective on about a $900,000 expenditures. So you have the report before you and the recommendation, Your Worship.
Somebody move the recommendation? Second, please?
Second.
For discussion? Anyone? Councilor Day?
I just thought that I would, for the record, let people know that there are a number of services for families and youth offered through the center, and it is greatly appreciated that Callwood offers them the tax exemption for the nonprofits that operate in the building. Provides a lot of services to the youth in our neighborhoods, and there are a number of, pardon me, a number of organizations that meet there, even if they don't operate directly out of the building, that are meeting there and sharing information on services that are available. And we have been noticing a steady decline in the availability of services for youth and families in the West Shore, which was part of why that building was built here, however long that was ago, 12 years ago. And, you know, that, that there are currently, we're starting to see statistics showing that services are actually better in Suk than they are in the West Shore at times. So it's really a big leg up to the organizations that do offer services, that they are able to provide it in the West Shore in such an affordable way. So just thought I would pass that along.
Anyone else? Called question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Transportation, oh, no, one more. 6.2.3, again, Director Finance Hotel Revitalization Tax Exemption Agreement?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So you have before you this evening a copy of the Revitalization Tax Exemption Agreement, and I also have prefaced that with a bit of a report. This has been a long, ongoing topic for council, not just for this council, but for the previous council, whereby a bylaw had been brought forward to create this revitalization tax exemption for hotels that may be built in Callwood. It's a 10-year exemption. The particular applicant that we did have there, it took a little longer than anticipated to get to the agreement stage, and in fact, as council knows, we had to amend the original bylaw. So this agreement now needs to be signed in a timely manner, because the next step that's required is a revitalization tax exemption certificate. So this is the bridging document between the bylaw and the issuance of the exemption certificate. It has been extremely carefully reviewed by the city's solicitors, as well as the hotel owners' solicitors, and we actually had a fairly lengthy meeting whereby we went through in detail the terms and agreed upon them. The bylaw does require that this come before council for your approval this evening, which is why it's on the agenda. Just going to see if there's anything else here I can, perhaps if you have any questions, I've done the best I can to present the details for you. So with that, I'll turn it back to council for your review.
Need the motion?
I will move the recommendation.
Second.
Discussion, council? Councilor Day?
And I just wanted to share with the public that I've asked a number of pointy questions to be sure that we are covered off in the case of adverse economic circumstances, and I have been satisfied by staff that we are very well covered off in this respect. So I just wanted to share that.
What I was going to say is thank you to staff for the diligence demonstrated in ensuring that undertaking something like this. It's clearly one of those things, it sounds very simple to start with, but when you actually delve into it, there's a lot of things that need to be covered off, so.
There's been a bit of unexpected drama at the end, I'll share with the folks, because I've been working closely with one of our lawyers at Young Anderson, and we've been joking that we need to get this tied up because she's expecting a baby, and it was supposed to be due the first of November. And I phoned her very late this afternoon to just make sure I was on track with some of the answers for Councilor Day. She was no longer at her desk and had just delivered an eight-pound baby boy three days ago, so we were really working on deadline and beyond here.
Thank you again. Councilor Nol?
Just to clarify, the recommendation is to receive the report for information, is that correct?
And approve the Hotel Revitalization Tax Exemption Agreement.
I believe that's later in the agenda. I believe that is later in the agenda?
No.
No?
Excuse me, no, this is not a bylaw. I just basically need council's approval on the agreement that is attached.
Thank you.
With that answered, all those in favor? Motion carries? And who doesn't? There we go. Moving then on to 6.3, Transportation and Public Infrastructure Committee, City Engineer, new item update on sewage treatment. You might want to, I don't know why that one's doing that. Will make it hard to hear.
Who buzzing?
That's fine.
So the intent of this report is to bring council up to date with the progress of sewage treatment for Callwood, which of course is to some extent bound up with sewage treatment for the capital region core area, and, but concentrating on how this affects Callwood. Attached as Appendix 1 to the report is an explanation of all of the entities which are currently involved in the decision, and which I make reference to in this report. I'd be happy to try and explain those entities if during the delivery of the report that raises a question for anybody. So the CRD at one time gave Callwood conditional approval to proceed separately on sewage treatment, but one of the conditions depended on the provincial government supplying a letter stating that Callwood building its own treatment plant would not affect the total grant to be given to the CRD for the McLaughlin plant. So the province has been very clear, they would never give such an assurance to anyone. So technically, we haven't met the requirements of the CRD for us to build our own plant. And in any case, the situation changed significantly when the McLaughlin project failed, and the City of Callwood is now working with its neighbors in the West Side Solutions Project, and at the same time, working on in-ground disposal for a potential Callwood plant, either independently or as part of that project. And these two tracks are starting to come together. And the West Side Select Committee through the CRD has engaged Urban Systems to assist the committee in better understanding the options for disposition of the solids left over after the liquid portion of the sewage has been treated, and to prepare order of magnitude cost estimates for some of the site options chosen in earlier work, including lifecycle costing and, I've just lost my report, and it'll be back up in a second. Sorry about that. So Urban Systems have engaged Corolla engineers from the US to assist with the work, and the consultants have had preliminary discussions with the technical oversight panel, and have reported that they seem to be on the same page, so that's helpful. Urban Systems work is still at an early stage. They report out at the end of the month, but indications are that there is a two-plant solution, one on the east side and one on the west side, that would be about the same in upfront capital costs as the original McLaughlin-Hartland proposal, with the caveat that the budget for McLaughlin-Hartland reportedly only included a 5% contingency at the time it was abandoned, and was therefore very likely to have exceeded a budget. Urban Systems are recommending a 40% contingency on their number because of the early stage of the cost estimate process. Urban Systems' opinion is, at this stage of the process, that a Callwood plant as part of a two-plant solution on the west side, so still having one plant on the east side, but now two on the west side, could be achieved without an ocean outfall, and this is based on work that Callwood has done to prove that, and which they've discussed with our consultants and are happy with. But they're recommending that the larger plant in Escoymalt would still be the ultimate backup in case of complete plant failure. So the main plant would not be any smaller as a result of a Callwood plant. So the Callwood plant would be an additional cost, unless further work to be done on lifecycle costs, revenues, et cetera, should show that those future revenues and lifecycle cost changes are significant compared to the capital cost. However, they feel that Callwood is the ideal site for small showcase plant, treating tertiary standards and beyond, and reusing the water immediately for aquifer recharge disposal to ground, but creating this infrastructure which can produce a high standard output for what is essentially a relatively small portion of the total system, and eventually use that for more direct uses such as toilet flushing as Callwood develops. They're also discussing tertiary treatment as a possibility for a portion of the Escoymalt plant output as a, similarly developing that capability in the Escoymalt municipality or wherever the plant does actually end up on that side, which would also allow, the same as the Callwood plant, to expand on the reuse of water in the future. I mean, to some extent, this is trying to minimize the cost of including tertiary treatment, but at the same time hedging bets on what climate change might do to our water situation at minimal cost. Now, Callwood's in a unique position when it comes to this, because we've got ideal geology for in-ground disposal. We can dispose of up to 30% of the total west side average dry weather flow, while at the same time, we have great opportunities for using the recovered water in new developments where there would be real revenues. The in-ground disposal is an environmental benefit, but there wouldn't be any revenues as a result. And there's been an initial discussion of this with the Minister of the Environment, and they're quite interested in it and certainly not discouraging us from looking at this way of disposing of a treated effluent. So some of the non-financial benefits to Callwood would be the possibility of selling or providing water to businesses seeking to locate in Callwood, where we can provide a greener image, which is often worth a percentage to the companies involved, and we could also perhaps undercut future costs of water, if not current costs. But this depends upon those businesses being very, very close to the site of production of the recycled water, which is why the ideal site is at the park and ride right in the heart of our downtown. And the presence of the showcase sewage treatment plant would also be used as a learning center for students, which would further enhance Callwood's reputation for economic development through green innovation, and also worked very well with Royal Roads University, et cetera. For the other members of the core area, it allows them to meet many of the objectives such as resource recovery and reuse that were desired by the public and in the original ministerial order, at a relatively minor increase in the total cost. And as I say, those numbers are still at an early stage. We will get more, we will get firmer numbers at the end of the month. Now, we envisage doing further work on defining the volume of water that can usefully be put into the aquifer as the next important step in proving that Callwood is the right location. And for now, the city will continue this work on its own budget, but we are probably nearing the point where the CRD would start to pay for this work, and we'll certainly encourage that. Now, of course, the part of that cost, if the CRD paid for it, would come from Callwood, but it would also come from the other municipalities and reduce our net cost. Now, the decision as to whether there is one single centralized plant, two plants, or a more decentralized system as I discussed, is in the end a decision that the board will make on recommendations from the consultants, West Side and East Side committees, and through the Core Area Liquid Waste Management Committee. So there's a lot of water to flow under the bridge before we know what actually happens. The current timetable envisages the final solution sets being chosen through further costing and public consultation after the October report by December, and the Core Area Liquid Waste Management Plan to be revised and approved by February 2016, sites rezoned by February, and submission to the granting authority by March. This is an ambitious timetable. However, the CRD will likely have about three years to construct the project or projects if no extensions are granted, and that is still possible with efficient progress. One of the things that the consultant has been at pains to educate us about is that after you've done treatment, you have products left. It doesn't disappear, and you have to have some way of disposing of those products, the biosolids and the primary solids being perhaps the most difficult, and therefore you need a market, and I don't mean necessarily a market in terms of it will pay you for it, but you have somewhere to get rid of it. And that's something they're doing a lot of work on to present to the committees, and by no means do I know what their, the end solution is there. But they have pointed out that an advantage of there being two or more plants within the core area is that instead of building one plant, the process is in a certain way and therefore needs a certain market, and therefore is at risk of that market disappearing or becoming too expensive for us. If you have two plants treating in different ways, producing different products for different markets, A, you don't have to find such a big market for the output of one plant, and B, if one of the plants finds its market is becoming untenable, then you can switch over the solids to the other plant to tidy over. So flexibility is a useful thing when you're depending on being able to get rid of these things somewhere else. And of course, for the local economy, more than one plant means smaller plants, which means more local involvement, less likely that they can only be tackled by international companies. Now turning to the future sewage treatment capacity for required by Now, turning to the future sewage treatment capacity required by Callwood. A little bit of history, in 2010, Callwood was allotted by the CRD 7.6% of the total capacity of the proposed sewage plant by 2030. Now, following a report to council and council's direction, the city asked CRD to reduce our allocation to 4.7%. This was predominantly because the CRD had used the growth in Langford and the growth in Callwood and averaged them and said that we both grew at the same rate, which is not true. Callwood actually grows at about a third the rate Langford does, looking at recent history. And, but our 4.7% was a volume calculated to allow for the Royal Bay High School to come online and approximately 120 new dwellings per year only until 2020. Well, now it appears that the plants won't be built until 2020 or even possibly later, and we have five years of additional data since 2010. And obviously, we can't use the 2020 data, date as our capacity target anymore, and I think we have to adopt 2030, which is what the other municipalities are using, and that still only gives the plant 10 years of life before some increase in capacity is required. So it, I'm proposing that we change our capacity request to 6.2%. That will increase the percentage of tax for the total project each, that we pay each year, and the financial implications are presented in this report. The potential financial cost of this recommended capacity increase is estimated at $300,000 for 2016. This would cost the average residential taxpayer an estimated $30 in 2016. That's an additional $30, or a 1.1% increase on their total tax bill. The total cost for this additional capacity could rise to $500,000 by 2018, given the increases in taxation that the CRD has laid out in the past, which would present a total cost increase of $55 to the average taxpayer, or a 2% increase in their total, 2000, from their total 2015 tax bill. The bigger picture is, it appears there's little likelihood that the CRD requisition for sewage treatment capital costs will be less than expected as a result of the changes in the project, and it may be more. According to the CRD, approximately $63 million or 8% of the previously total estimated cost has been spent on the project up to the end of August this year, and of course the vast majority of that was on the McLaughlin project. Potential grant shareable costs are said to be approximately $32 million, potentially reducing the net cost to date to about $42 million. Looking at the Callwood 2015 budget, we have $350,000 budgeted from gas tax. We're not likely to exceed $200,000 in expenditures on the work we're doing. The expenditures to the end of August are about $125,000 right now, and commitments made to date would only increase this to $145,000 by the end of September. We're recommending that we continue working with pain engineering. Goldr engineering has changed staff, and we won't be giving them any further work after they've completed their work ordered to date. But the pain engineering work with some assistance from architects would, takes us closer to $200,000 but not exceed it by the end of 2015, we're estimating. We're trying to pace this work so that it helps lead the west side process in the direction that best benefits the city, but does not get too far in front of it in case that process should take a different direction. And we're trying to look for opportunities for the CRD to take over that expenditure in any case. So the recommendation is that council receive the report for information and approve an increase in the capacity request for sewage treatment to the CRD by 32% compared to the previous request. And the CRD is, has actually set a date for us to provide that, which is passed. But I don't doubt there's every opportunity to increase that request at any time before people get down to serious designing of a plant. Thank you.
Counselor Day?
Just a couple of questions for you. Are we still considering a modular system so that future growth can be accommodated and paid for in the future?
That's one of the things that Urban Systems has really said over and over again, is that we need to choose sites that are large enough and we need to accommodate future growth, and we need to, particularly with the tertiary treatment, allow for it to be modular so that it can be increased as market opportunities appear or as necessity appears with climate change, so that the increases in the tertiary are not required, but they're there if we need to do them. The space is there, and the ability to moderately increase the plant size is there.
Okay, and my other question relates to, let's move back up till I find it. You were talking about in your report that the Callwood plant as part of a two-plant solution on the west side, I know it out of the way, without an ocean outfall and using the larger plant as the ultimate backup. I'm just curious why we're still talking about a backup. Does the main plant have any sort of a backup plan?
An excellent point. I mean, the main plant has a backup in the sense that they have an ocean outfall, and you know, if they had a Halifax situation develop where they couldn't treat sewage at all, it just all goes down the outfall. That's the backup. The, you know, we have examples like Dockside Green, which has never, since it went through the initial bedding-in period, never had an out-of-spec day in its plant and never had to shut down. The tertiary plants generally are extremely reliable, and particularly smaller plants seem to be very reliable, and this was proven in Hurricane Sandy, far less vulnerable to weather. And I can't explain why that is, but none of them went down in Hurricane Sandy, whereas the big plants all went down. So I think there's a good argument that can be made that we don't need a backup, but of course MOE is the final decider, and they take the position that, you know, there must be absolute safety against the failure of the plant as far as that can be achieved.
So have we looked at doing that with attenuation tank or, you know, building a second footprint that could be used in an emergency?
That's something that should be considered at a more detailed stage, and certainly I heard again today from all of the technical people involved that we should be setting the criteria for what we want out of sewage treatment and what is allowed within the CRD and what is not allowed, but allow the bidders to use their imagination and use the technology they know to propose solutions that may include items like that that might reduce the cost.
So I just have one further comment to make, and that is that I'm pleased to see that the report is looking at kind of cradle to grave, for lack of a better way to put it, in terms of considering what the disposal costs are of the end products, because that was a big concern in the previous look at it, where tertiary treatment was being discounted because they weren't considering the cost of dealing with solids.
I should, I should, I probably should have included the fact that they're looking at 50-year lifecycle costs, and right now they're struggling with the problem of trying to predict what the 50-year revenues are in a situation when nobody really knows what the water demand will be even 10 years from now, don't mind 50. So they're probably going to have to produce ranges of possibilities.
First, a couple of comments. I fully support tertiary treatment. I'm glad Callwood is still considering it. In my opinion, it's the only level of treatment that we should be considering in any of the Grounds disposal sounds intriguing. I heard earlier proposals for in-stream, like dumping the water, wastewater into streams or, you know, that's no better than just dumping it into the ocean, so I'm really not keen on that. The in-ground disposal sounds good. Potentially using it for irrigation is a fantastic idea. Just a quick question to the engineer. If Callwood is paying for extra capacity in the Isquimal plant, so we have a backup, do we own that capacity, i.e. when we need more capacity, can we just pump straight to there if we can't immediately expand our tertiary treatment?
I believe the situation is if we ask for 6.2% capacity in the total system, we essentially have dibs on 6.2% of the total capacity. Now, the total capacity in theory is limited to the capacity of the main plant since it is the backup for the Callwood plant. The Callwood plant may well be bigger than Callwood's total output, so it would be servicing a quantity of sewage that is produced by Langford and Callwood, but our costs would be determined on the cost of the entire project, big plant and little plant. Possibly, you know, if there's a east side, west side, large plant plus the Callwood plant, it could be our portion of that, three-plant scenario. I think there's a long way to go in the political process before we really know what that answer is.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Question to you, Michael. Is there a need, I mean, I know they've asked for any changes to capacity, but is there a need for that to be now? I, you know, been working on, alongside on this project for some time, and although we're getting close, we're not there yet. We still don't have locations, we still don't have technologies, we still don't have, you know, that plan in place. I don't see that those kind of numbers meaning much yet, and they haven't determined if there's, you know, one to four plants on the west side versus whatever the east side might come up with. So I'm just a little bit skeptical on saying approving increases because I know for sure that they'd welcome the extra $300,000 a year, plus, and it's an escalating cost, it's not one that stays static, so.
Given that it only affects the total cost by 1.5%, or the total capacity by 1.5%, rather, it's hardly an urgent thing for the CRD to know this, since the, all the calculations done for a plant 1.5% smaller at this stage really apply equally to a plant 1.5% bigger. The 1.5% is what they call noise. It's not an amount that they even think about in the costing. The costing right now is with a 40% contingency, so the 1.5% is meaningless. But I think, I think it may be a fairness thing in that all the other communities are, have capacities calculated for 2030, and they may desire that we also increase our capacity to 2030. It's a difficult position now at this point to logically defend that we're still working on a 2020 capacity.
So do you?
I'm sure there's time for council to consider this and reconsider it at a future meeting rather than...
Yeah, I just, you know, I mean, I would like to see more, more concrete plans of where we're headed in, with things. There may not be a plant in Callwood at all if, you know, it registers, you know, in a different way. So I just, I'm loathe to saying increase with a money figure attached to it, ahead of actually having to sign on a document to say that. But that's up to council to put the recommendation out here, separated or all in one, whichever you like. Anyone else? Recommendation then, folks?
I would like to move that we receive the report and bring back the increase to a future meeting, so we have time to think about it. I just feel we're not quite ready to pull the trigger on that, and I was trying to make my way through the very long Core Area Liquid Waste Management Committee reports today, and as long as I've been involved, I've been involved, and I try to stay current, and I still find it confusing and difficult. So I'd just like to see a little closer where we're going. I mean, there's just no end to the spending on this system. I mean, the report that's for CRD tomorrow, they, we've spent $40,000 already on the ombuds person for the CRD processes. Yep. And so, you know, I just, before I sign up for more costs, I'd like to know what I'm buying.
Your worship, the reason we're bringing forward this report, I think, is twofold. One, just to bring council up to speed with respect to where this whole issue currently sits, where it's going, because as you know, at the end of this month, both the east side and the west side select committees are going to be asked to make decisions with respect to preferred options and solution sets in order of magnitude costs moving forward to the next stage. You know, the short list is becoming shorter and shorter as we move along, so we thought it important to bring this report forward, just to bring all members of council up to speed as to, this is a snapshot of where we currently sit. The second reason we brought this forward is at the CAO and the technical level, we've been asked, and I believe this is on the agenda for the Core Liquid Waste Management Committee meeting this week, we've been asked to sort of revisit the capacity number. And I think the points you've raised are totally valid and legitimate, and we're struggling as well in regards to, with so much uncertainty out there, it's very difficult to sort of come up with a firm quantification. So this, what this represents is our best efforts at the technical level to sort of look down the road and really comply with their requests that, look, we've taken another look at this number, this is what we think it is, because we understand all of the municipalities have been asked to do this. But I think that the points you've raised are, you know, really good ones that should be raised and probably will be raised by other municipalities in the core meeting. But as I say, this kind of represents our best effort at the technical level at this stage, given all of the uncertainties that you refer to. this stage, given all of the uncertainties that you refer to.
Do we have a motion? We need a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Called questionables in favor, opposed, motion carries. Moving then, folks, into bylaws, number, 7.1, bylaw number 1599, first, second, and third readings for Callwood Main Sewer Local Area Service bylaw and Establishment Loan Authorization bylaw number 5982001.
Move introduction.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, motion carried.
Move second.
Second, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, motion carried. All those in favor, opposed, motion carried. Bylaw number 1601, first, second, and third readings, Callwood West Sewer Local Area Service Establishment and Loan Authorization bylaw number 6252001.
Move introduction.
All those in favor, opposed, motion carried. Any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, motion carries.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, motion carried. Bylaw number 1583, third reading only, Callwood Land Use bylaw number 151, 1989, amendment number 145.
Move third.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, motion carried. Bylaw number 1602, first, second, and third readings, exempt certain lands and improvements from taxation for a 10-year period beginning fiscal 2011, bylaw number 13592010 amendment.
Moving introduction.
All those in favor, opposed, motion carried.
Move second.
Second, second.
Discussion? All those in favor, opposed. Okay, back up. Councilor Nall?
Why are we beginning in fiscal 2011? Would that be not rewriting history?
Basically, we are amending bylaw number 1359, which began in 2011, and the purpose of the bylaw that you are currently considering and voting on is to add the folio that we discussed earlier this evening, which is the one on Whale Road, 345 Whale Road. This is just amending an original bylaw to add this to it, to ensure they get the one year exemption.
Thank you.
All those in favor then, opposed, motion carried. Looking for third?
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, motion carried. The one release of in-camera item. And adjournment, folks?
Move adjournment.
All those in favor, opposed.